Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City Council meeting for the City of Cannon Falls for January 21st order. Can we have a roll call, Dave?
Sir.
Bringold.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Mearal talk.
Here. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve in a second, I bill to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. We'll get right to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion or resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending December 31st, 2019. Item B, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending January 17th, 2020. Item C, minute meetings for the January 7th, 2020 city council meeting. Item D, approved CETA Economic Development Proposal. Item E, approve ABDO Ike and Myers Interim Finance Director Proposal. Item F, approve the Baker-Tilly Springstead Proposal for TIF Services. Item G, approve the new ambulance billing company. Item H, Resolution 2459, accepting a monetary donation from Invenergy Cannon Falls LLC for $1,500 to the Police Department. Item I, Resolution 2460, accepting a monetary donation from Alsted Medical Center for $100 to the Fire Department. And item J, Authorization to Change Bank Signature Cards. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
J.
Item J? Will make that item B under council business?
Uh, I want F.
F? Uh, approve the proposal for TIF services will make that item C under council business. I'm gonna pull down item A. We'll make that item D. Okay, that's F. J. And A. Anything else? I take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of J, F, and A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary Jill and a second by Bill to approve the consent agenda with the three exceptions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into council business. The Police Department Extra Duty Policy. Dave, wanna just give us a little background? We talked about this at our work session last week, too. It's a agreement that we have with the winery for our police officers doing off-duty security.
Correct. We did talk about it last week and looking for, there was some general consensus, some general conversation, just looking for some direction from the council tonight relative to the, to the specific question of the extra-duty police policy. I provided a little bit of background information to kind of fill in some of the questions and comments that we heard last, last Tuesday. Joe had provided previously to me some excerpts from the Police Department Manual that talks about the extra-duty police and the, and the current policies as they exist, as adopted in 2007. Provided some excerpts of the council minutes from October of 2007. That's when the City Council adopted the Police Department Manual, Policy Manual, which included the extra-duty police provisions we're talking about tonight. Earlier this year, I communicated with Roger Knutson, Attorney Roger Knutson, about this question. It had been raised to me by several others. There was even some conversation by the council earlier last year with respect to this policy and particularly the relationship we had with the winery. So I did contact the city attorney at that time and I've included a, a copy of his response to me from July 9th. Also included is the request for officer event application. That's the application as it existed last year. I don't believe it's changed at all for this year. You get an idea of what the agreements and the provisions are that pertain to both us as a city as well as the, the contracting body. In this case, the, the Cannon River Winery. So you can see, you can see that. There was a change of policy that I, that I'm aware of and that was in September of 2014 and that's when we added as, as a city, the $20 administrative fee. So with each event that's, that occurs under this policy, there's the payment not only to the officer from the contractor themselves, but also an additional $20 administrative fee. And so we've been receiving that. Also included, the City of Burnsville, part of their contracted policy, to give you an idea about how at least another city, in this case, Burnsville handles that. They've talked about indemnification insurance, something that we talked about at the, at the workshop last week. And then item E is just a record of the relationship we had with the winery last year relative to this policy. I believe there was also an additional contract last year for someone other than the winery that's not included in, in that information. So again, that information's provided just as supplemental and a little bit background, be perhaps clarification of what's taken place in the past and hopefully to try to help the council as you deliberate and discuss this evening whether or not you're looking for any particular changes in that, in that policy based on this history. The ones in particular that, that I think the consensus that we talked about last Tuesday was in the area of considering amendments to the policy related to passing on indemnification and maybe more of the liability to the, the individual in the business of contracts with us. And that can be done. That's done in Burnsville. It was done, I think, in the Plymouth example as, as well. And I'm guessing other cities have done the same. So if the council desires, wishes to do that, we probably should have some additional language there. We also talked about the cost. You know, is, is the charge that, that we levy against the winery in this case predominantly, is that covering all of our costs? And I think there was some interest in, in having a look at that. And then we also had a conversation about what really constitute extra duty. We know that we've got a contractual relationship have in the past with the Cannon River Winery. I think that's pretty clear. There was some conversation last week about, well, are there other charges for contracted services that would, that would fall under the, the extra-duty policy? And that's perhaps a question that the Police Department would have to answer. So hopefully this gives a little bit more background information, but it's up to the council to provide some direction. If you've got questions for myself or, or the police, so we'll certainly try to address them if we can.
I think at the work session, it, the, the talk was a lot about liability. Whether this is really a benefit to the city. I guess what an officer does in his off-time, that's up to him. I, 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 but, and I guess it was suggested at the work session that if we did allow this to happen, that maybe the winery would have an, a, a commercial umbrella policy to cover, would make it more, you know, make it nicer for me to grasp. So I don't know what their comments, the rest of you have about it.
I understand that that was the biggest concern from our workshop, but revisiting the email from Roger Knutson, what would be, uh, any difficulties or what would be the, would it be easier if it was hired through like a private contractor situation? Maybe Chief McCormick, how would that affect the department if on their off-time they were free and clear to do it as they wish as private contractors?
I think what he was actually referring to was more hiring of private security.
Away from the department?
Yep. Utilizing that resource rather than the department. Candidly, I would be very hesitant to approve the officers working essentially police duties within the city outside of my control. And that's what extra duty is designed to do is keep the control with the department, with the city. So the ability to say we want to have a rider, much like we do when somebody wants to put on a event in one of the parks that would name the city as an extra red shirt, that type of thing.
What constitutes, what, what does constitute, what's an event? Explain what an event means. Like, is this an event down there or, uh, that seems to be, that's kind of unclear. I mean, is a funeral procession, is that an event?
It is if you guys say it is. I mean, essentially, we provided that as a, a service to the community.
Right.
For a funeral escort. We could stop that if, if that's what the council so desires.
No, no.
So I mean, the, the component that we've looked at in the past would be something outside of the services that we normally provide. So you've got a motorcycle or a bicycle ride coming through the city and they want to have officers at certain intersections to control traffic. That would not be a service we would normally provide. They could hire officers to do that, much as we have in the past. The triathlon would be an example of that. The bike race when it was here was a semi-component of that. The, the council had directed us that was a community activity, but we were supposed to track our hours and then the costs were split, third with the chamber, third through the city, and a third through the promoter. So those would be examples of sort of the differences. And the differences are kind of nuanced. You know, we don't charge anything for Fun Thursday when, you know, we help them make sure that there's traffic cones, barricades are there, you know, that type of stuff. We don't charge for that. That's just done part of a community event.
Like Fourth of July Parade or?
On councils in the past have said, community events are just part of doing business. So for instance, Memorial Day Parade, Fourth of July Parade, Fair are all things that are just cost of doing business for the city.
Right. And, and I would agree with that. However, the security we're providing at the winery, I don't think falls within.
Nope. And that's, that, that falls in, much like when St. Pius hired us for their event. Those would be more the contractual. And when you look at the Burnsville policy or the Plymouth policy, they call it contractual duty or contracted duty. I can't remember the exact wording they use. But that's essentially what the winery, St. Pius, the Dulathon, those types of things have been, is they sign the agreement with the city, city provides the services, and then they get billed for it.
I know I've harped on this before, so everybody probably knows this. Um, when the, the pay for the officers has been running through the, the city.
Yep.
When did that start?
That started before I was here.
Because in this?
It started with Minnesota Malting from what I can tell.
In this piece from 2007, it says, "Extra-duty compensation will be arranged by the city and paid to the officer directly by the requesting party."
Yep.
That's not us.
Nope. That's not how it's done.
Well, but that's what it says.
That's what the policy is. I understand that. Yes. The policy was taken from another agency's protocol. It wasn't till after when we actually got a request that I learned that the city ran it through, their process was to bill it through the city.
And so?
So I just did.
Why didn't you suggest to change it back?
I didn't catch it in the policy.
Okay. I just, I think it would be a lot safer if we didn't.
Well, I think we're gonna have to modify the policy. There's absolutely no doubt.
Yeah. There's, there's too much to change.
And so as I looked at both Plymouth and Burnsville, I think what we can do is we can pull some of the best things from both of those and bring it into our new policy. I haven't crafted a new policy quite candidly because I wanted to see what direction this discussion would take so I can make sure that the important things are included.
Yeah. And at the very least, I think we need to have all of our costs covered, plus even an extra little spiff.
So I did.
Because it should be worth something.
Sure.
To places like the winery to have a dedicated police officer.
I did run the numbers based on the ratios that work comp, I checked with HR. And so the formulas that we would use would be Medicare, Para, and Work Comp. And so I ran the projections based off of the 2019 numbers increased 3% because that's what the, the city's COLA was. And the cost that we would be paying out in, in expenses would be $62.73 an hour.
Okay.
What we would be billing would equal $63 an hour. So we would be covering our costs, but we wouldn't necessarily cover the administrative side of it because again, that hasn't been adjusted for a couple of years, which is one of the things that I talked with Sarah about doing last fall. But we've held off because of some of these, these questions. So you haven't seen something come before you and say, "We'd suggest writing that to X." Now, if we look at that and we say, okay, it's, you know, we're billing out at essentially $63 an hour. Administrative costs should be 12% or 13%. We could just factor that on, change again what comes before you and setting, you know, sort of the benchmark rates and then just referencing being adjusted for cost of living or something so that every year it doesn't necessarily have to come back. But we would look at it. And if it's getting out of whack, we would bring it before you. What we've always used is sort of trying to round to either even dollar or 50 cent, just because for counting purposes, it just was easier rather than, you know, breaking it down into $62.73.
Yeah. I'm just concerned that all of our costs get covered.
Yep. I, I think that's very easy to do.
Okay.
Well, my, uh, question I have is, I understand the benefit that it is to the officer to make a little extra money. I understand the benefit to the winery. What's the benefit to the city other than some increased liability risk?
I think the benefit to the city would be providing a service that businesses have a need for.
But you're putting the city at a, at a, at a higher risk.
Well, out of all the events we've had, we haven't had any incidents.
No, we haven't yet. No, we don't.
But at just the same token, walking over here, I could have tripped on the rug in the foyer and had an event. So if you're working more, will there be potentially more increase of risk? Certainly. But I don't think that it's necessarily something that we can put a quantitative dollar amount to say, okay, well, we're gonna charge 20% for risk. I don't know what that would be.
How much more of this business do you think you can handle? I mean, if this gets out and other places want security for their?
I don't think that we're gonna be inundated with a ton.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if you've thought of that.
Uh, when, you know, we were contacted by St. Pius. They were looking for this type of service because they had some legitimate concerns given what we've seen in houses of worship this past year. And so we said, "This is, you know, what we can provide for you and this is, you know, the rate."
Okay.
They weren't sure. They went back, I'm assuming, talked to some of their elders or council, you know, or governing body and came back and said, "Yes, we want to do that."
Okay.
Um, and I think that, you know, if we don't do it, would they have hired somebody from, you know, some private security company? Maybe. I don't know. But I think they felt a lot better knowing that they had their local officers, a local officer there to provide that.
And as I asked before, um, by providing this, we are in no way guaranteeing that we will fill the shift. Because that, that was my other concern, that we do this and, oh, can't fill it?
Yep.
We're in trouble.
Yep. And, you know, so they understand that.
Okay.
Again, the officers are always under the control of the police chief.
Right.
So that if something big happened, the event is supposed to be September 20th at 8:00 PM. Uh, you know, 2018. Tornado happened at, you know, 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
All hands are on deck. They're not gonna be there. We would notify them. They would understand as part of this that that could happen.
Okay. All right.
So the consensus is to maybe redo the policy or?
I think so. Let's, let's take some time and redo it and look at it.
What I'll do is I'll go through the Burnsville, the, you're gonna, I'd like to get Edinas because that was another one that was referenced by our city attorney's office. And then look for the best out of those, redraft ours and bring it back to, to the council body to, to take a look at.
Okay.
Within that, I would probably do a, um, side document that would cover some of the layout of administrative costs. I'd have a conversation with, you know, Sarah and how much does it take for her to bill and, you know?
Right.
That type of stuff so that we can make sure that we are covering that cost. And from what I understand, she just compiles it till that service isn't needed any longer and then bills out, like for the winery, she bills out at the end of the year.
Right. Okay.
But if the council wanted to do it quarterly, you know, I could put that option in talking with you guys so that, you know, you would know, we could do it these different ways.
Will you be talking with the winery about, one of the things listed here is, uh, extra insurance that they would provide?
I won't be yet until council says this is what the, you know, this is the policy we want to approve. These are all the ground rules. These are the costs. Then I can give them an update of what all of that is. I have talked with them because every year we touch base at the beginning of the year. And they've indicated that they would like to continue to have this service. But I said, "I just don't know what the numbers are yet."
Okay.
And so, you know, they're sort of waiting for, for me to give that information back to them. Then we send them the document. We'll make some modifications to our, our agreement. I think there's some things in Burnsville's that are interesting. I think there's some things in Plymouth's that are, that are really good. And so we can sort of bring those together and, and come up with what would essentially be the best practice to you blend those into a new contractual agreement, addressing some of the concerns of, you know, um, naming the city as an additional insured or, you know, whatever components we want to word it as so that they understand that. And then of course, also making sure that the rate we're charging not only just covers our costs, but covers all of our costs. And maybe as I think a couple of council members indicated, a little bit more so that, you know, it's the unforeseen things are still somewhat factored for.
And, and this was just gonna be one flat rate for whichever officer they get, right? So that's less.
Yes. And that's what we've done with the winery.
Okay.
In the past, what we've done is it would be just built off of the officers that were there.
Mm-hmm.
I think to try to structure this in the simplest manner, it would be doing much like Burnsville does where it's just, this is the flat rate.
Right.
And then the officers are paid to this flat rate regardless of which officer works.
No, that makes sense because otherwise they could say, "Well, no, we don't want the chief of police."
I wouldn't blame them.
I know. Well, I wouldn't blame them either. But, you know, because you would be billed at a higher rate probably.
Right.
So that's why I wanted to make sure.
And again, you know, as I explained at work session, I really don't like to work these. It's just that this year has had some unique challenges staffing-wise.
Yeah.
So some of the resources that would have filled shifts weren't available.
Right.
And then Joe and I look at it and in this case, just he was gone, vacation or whatever for a bunch of them. So I picked him up instead.
Okay.
Otherwise, he'd pick up more of them than I would.
That was my concern that we have a flat rate.
And I've also heard, at least for some officers, they really don't care to be doing this stuff.
Especially not on a weekend off.
Well, I mean, when, when it's essentially their weekend off and we've got a Friday, Saturday, not everyone wants to give up their Friday and Saturday.
Right.
And so they, they've actually do a fairly good job of sort of evenly splitting it amongst themselves. And this year was a little more challenging with, with some of our staffing.
Well, yeah, because the records show that you had to pull the most duty in 2019.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, I would like to see us at least stop doing this until we can get some of this information.
And that's, that's not a problem. The winery's events themselves, those won't actually start up until probably May.
Right.
A time before they would need us.
Yeah.
And if somebody else contacts us, what I would tell them is that right now or not, but I certainly can bring their special request to council and you can weigh out whether it'd be something you'd want to do or not. Now, if they say, "We need you tomorrow," then we just aren't gonna be able to help them.
Right.
But if they're, you know, we're looking for next month, one of the churches is having a speaker that they want us to be there for.
Right.
We'd be able to come back to, to council and say, "This request has been made. How do you want to handle it?"
I, I would also like to see a list from you guys of what's extra duty, what's, you know, a second job, whatever.
Well, the policy sort of spills out those different components.
But, but we want you to spill out what you want it to be because you're saying you want to change this.
So extra, extra duty, I, I think if you look at the memo from, uh, the administrator, uh, number three would be a, a list of what current, previous, and anticipated circumstances are.
Okay.
That's really hard. I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
But what I can say is that our policy and, and part of the policy is cut off. But, you know, things that we won't do are spelled out like labor disputes. You know, if.
Right.
You know, if one of our businesses locked out their employees, we would not be involved in, you know, providing services to separate them from, you know, other than our standard duties as officers during the course of regular employment.
Right.
We won't, and we've had requests for us to do check IDs and we won't do that. That's the business's responsibility.
Right.
We will assist them if they've got a questionable ID, but that service we would provide to any of our businesses, whether they had an officer working there or not.
Or you can arrest someone for having a fake ID or whatever.
Yeah, those types of things.
Okay.
And, you know, the outside employer, you know, would wanna say, "Well, I want the officer here, but they can't do these peace officer parts of their duty." That would be another thing, we wouldn't do that, offer that. So, I think it'd be easier to say, "There's certain things that we're not gonna do" as opposed to saying, "Here's the things I think might occur." Because my list of things that we're not gonna do really isn't gonna change.
Well...
Then the ones that might not be caught in that, I'm looking at it every single request and determining, "Are there more provisions I need to restrict on it?"
Go ahead.
And, you know, if it is, I'll spell out what those restrictions are.
Well, please, please look at that carefully because I agree with a lot of what you've been saying, you know, that we can't, you know, we can't do certain things, we can't take a job or we can't do our job.
Yep.
One thing I question, okay, let's just say the church that you did.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, you know the rates and all that. Instead of each one, you know, like the winery, what would it cost us for an umbrella, you know, for the extra reach?
Just overall for the city to purchase?
Yeah. But, if somebody could find out, I mean...
Well, I could check, I could check with Connie, who is our local representative for the league.
Yeah.
And just ask if they have a additional rider.
Right.
And then...
But, then depending on cost, we wanna pass that on.
If that's...
It could be fast.
If that would be, you know, sort of an annual cost, let's just say a thousand dollars annually. We could say, you know, the winery typically has thirty events.
Right.
What, you know, what would that breakout be, so we're gonna charge, you know, twenty dollars per event for that? It may not cover all of it because it's gonna be flex, right? If we get a bunch of requests, we can make it more than the premium.
Right.
The next year, if it flexes the other way, we could make less than the premium. The policy that the city has, I don't know if we already have that type of coverage, but Connie would know.
My guess would be easier for the requesting party to cover it.
I think it would be because...
Because then there'd be figuring for us.
If we just said, "You gotta have a million dollar policy," most of them probably are carrying that type of, I mean, like the winery or some of the other ones.
Additional insured.
But, you have to figure out how to, what's an event versus what is a normal thing that we would expect out of the police. We expect you guys to do traffic control at a funeral, same for our parades and those things are the normal course of your business.
Yep.
Winery or doing it for a church because it's politically sensitive subject, that's a whole nother end.
Well, I think the easiest way to be is if we are putting somebody dedicated there for that purpose.
Right.
So, if we're doing traffic control for a funeral event, they know that at noon, when they expect to move to the cemetery, we may not be there because we just had a car crash, you know, up on Highway twenty and, you know, twenty-nine. And then they know we're not gonna be there and they get by. On the other hand, if they said, "We absolutely want an officer," then we would assign somebody and bill them for that service. So, I think that's the easiest way to look at an extra duty or contractual event would be where we're absolutely dedicating somebody to it. Now, we could still have that tornado where we pull them out, but those cases are pretty rare.
Yeah.
And again, I think that would be something, I'd look to see how Plymouth, how Burnsville and Edina worded it, but I think that the contractual component is what makes it different because you're dedicating a body to that purpose other than, say, a community event. So, we put officers at Fun Thursday. We're not billing the chamber. Cruising Days would be another one.
Well, really anything that's traffic control, so that would cover, that would cover the funerals, parades, all that.
Right, we've tried to, we've tried to look at it, is there, you know, a community component to it? So, if somebody's bringing a bicycle ride or a motorcycle ride and they're just stopping at one of our bars or our businesses, but they're not originating for here, they're not ending here, they're just passing through, we're not gonna look at that as a community type event.
Right.
That's a business specific event. Now, the business could say, "We want you to stop traffic and direct all of them in all at once." Again, then they could hire us.
Right.
Otherwise, they could, you know, would have to risk that we got tied up with something else and couldn't assist them.
This might be slightly off the topic, but when was the last time, because police, you have your manual and you update various things, but it never seems to come to us as a council to approve like we would on a personnel policy or something like that? Yes, sir?
I've been trying to get that fact out. Should I do it now?
Do, do... You think it's okay now?
You can speak.
For those of you that don't hate me yet, doesn't the city administrator have the authority to, to, "I yes or no this," the whole situation?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You mean about the winery? Of any outside, any outside work.
Well, it depends on whether or not we're defining this as outside work, I suppose.
No, this type of work.
Oh, I see, this type of thing.
You're talking about outside employment, employment outside the city of Cannon Falls, not geographically, but to work for a different employer at the same time they're hired by the city, is that the question?
Two thousand and sixteen, city, outside employment, city administrator has authority.
I guess, I guess I could answer it best in this way. Every year, I get a two or three requests from the officers that may do outside employment. Maybe it's driving somebody's farm truck in the fall or doing something else. In the past, I've looked at them, put any additional restrictions on them and approved them under our department policy, which covers that and, you know, existed before the city adopted their policy. I haven't sent those up to the administrators in the past. If the administrator wants to see them, I certainly can. I haven't gotten any yet for this year, but I expect I'll be getting them soon. I don't know if the, you know, administrator wants to, you know, have every single thing flow through them or designate that down to, you know, sort of the department heads to address by and large, that I don't know. Previous administrators have, you know, more delegated that. You know, Dave, I don't think has indicated one way or the other on that area.
Steve, where's, is that documentation on the charter or...
Nope, that would be the city's personnel policy.
The personnel policy.
Okay.
The handbook.
But, our...
That's what I'm getting at, is we update our personnel policy as we make changes.
Yep.
I haven't seen any out of the...
Yep. So, the department policies, typically you guys don't see them. So, when Post mandates a new policy, I create the policy, issue it out and, you know, the officers acknowledge the receipt on it and it just goes into our policy manual. I don't typically flow every single change within the department policy manual back through council simply because sometimes I need to get them in effect right away because Post may have said, "You've gotta make this change," or we get a court ruling and the courts have come down and said, "You now shall do this," and so then we have to modify our policy to be in compliance.
But, does that get approved through the city administrator?
No, that's what you guys hired me to do, is make sure our policies are...
So, what this says is wrong.
I'm not saying that was wrong, I'm just saying that we actually had an outside employment policy before it turned up in the city's personnel policy. And so, we've continued to implement the requests and stuff handled at the department level.
But, maybe we need to get to a point where we have the, all our policies and charter and everything kinda matching up.
Sounds like they should agree somehow, yeah. What supersedes what?
Right. Well, I would think personnel policy would...
Usually the most recent is...
What we try to operate under is, we're typically more restrictive in some of our areas than the city's personnel policy. We just aren't more lax than the city's personnel policy.
Well, we should probably nail that down, so that's another thing you can...
But, I, and I, I'm sorry, I brought a little bit off talk, topic here, but I, yeah, I would like us to hold off on police doing anything until we can get some of these, you know, indemnification and insurance provisions and who's doing...
By holding off, you're referring to extra duties.
Correct.
If we get a request.
Until you've got...
That's certainly, that's certainly, I think, simple enough to do, especially since our primary one is the winery and we're two or three months from where they would make even requests.
Okay, all right.
So, I think that the fourth, we might have some drafts. Ideally, I always like to have our city attorney's office look at things before, you know, we move them to you guys. But, you know, if you wanna see it before we send it to them, we certainly can do that to make sure that the language you're looking for is in there. I don't think it would be before you for formal action, just more of a consensus.
Right, that's fine.
And then, once I've got, "Yep, this is kinda meeting what you want," then I'll go back to the city attorney's office, make sure that there is something that I'm not missing, especially in the indemnification area, and then, you know, we'll move it back to you guys for...
All the wherefores and...
Yep.
How-tos and all that.
As with that, we'd be creating a new, you know, contractual agreement and anytime we do contractual agreements, we always wanna make sure that the city attorney is reviewing them.
Yes, that's true.
I think when we get down to the end and we agree that to let the, you know, the police officer do that, I think the winery would definitely take out an umbrella liability policy.
They may already have that type of coverage.
They just have to name us as...
And that's something I'll probably also ask Connie about. You know, as long as I'm asking about the league component, what would, you know, what would, what should we be asking for?
Yes.
And then she, that's her industry, she's gonna know much better than I am or...
And that kinda coverage is typically not terribly expensive, it's just an endorsement and not a big deal.
The record from last year shows one event in January and one in March and then it starts heating up after that.
Yeah, so, we've got time.
Yeah, and when I talked with Ann, it didn't sound like they had anything this year until, if it was the end of April or beginning of May.
Okay, so, we've got time.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, work on that and then we'll look at it again, so...
Mayor, just two comments.
Yep.
One is just a clarification, Matt asked the chief about Roger Knudsen's email response to me. It's pretty clear that my question to Roger was specifically pertaining to the Cannon River Winery. Make that clarification. Also, I got a question and I, you know, I see the agreement, I see the payments, I see the contract that we had with the winery last, this last year. And Jeff, you had asked that we invoice the winery, which we did, at the fifty-six dollar an hour per rate. Pay the officer forty-nine dollars. I see different officers at different rates, do we pay every officer that works under this contract the same?
Yes.
At the forty-nine, so it's a consistent...
So, it's just a flat, and my understanding of what council wants is that's what we would carry forward and just apply it across the board.
Yes.
That this is the flat rate they're paid, this is the flat rate we bill. So, there's none of the nuances of, "Okay, so for this event, it's gonna be, you know, forty dollars an hour, but for this event, it's gonna be sixty dollars an hour, it's just always the same."
I did, I did notice and that up in the cities and the bigger departments got a lot more flexibility than we do, that they seem to be charging in that ninety-five dollar an hour range.
Yep, and from talking with their chiefs, it's based off of their top patrols and so they're making obviously more money than we're paying our people.
Well, cost of living is just higher too.
So, their time and a half probably, you know, instead of, like our time and a half, which is what I built it off of for the 2020, was based off of the top end for patrol officer. So, that puts that rate at fifty dollars and fifty cents an hour. Up there, their overtime rate could be seventy-five, eighty dollars an hour. So, you know, there's that dynamic that they're charging more, but their costs are more.
Okay.
Yep.
Work on that and we'll look at it here down the road. Okay, other council business, item B, we brought down authorization to charge bank signature cards, Morris?
All I want there is I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Oh. Adding Sarah here.
Yeah, adding Sarah to it, so...
Okay, I'll motion to approve that authorization.
I don't think you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You can make a motion, you can't make a motion.
Derek, second?
I'll second it.
To approve that authorization to change bank signature cards. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention, one abstention. Okay, item C is F, approve the Baker Tilly Springstead proposal for TIF services. Steve?
I don't really have any concerns except I just wanted you to say that again.
Oh, you did, you're terrible.
When did the Cannonball come in to this TIF?
Okay, good question. There's actually two projects involved with the Baker Tilly proposal. One is in the industrial park, the Carstensen expansion, the trucking outlet, we talked about that before. What we're doing on the Cannonball, and this will become an expense, a shared expense between the EDA and Cannon Falls Economic Initiatives, we want to pre-qualify the Cannonball site as eligible and legally documented as a qualified redevelopment tax increment district before the building is demolished. The reason for that is under state law, we have to have a structurally substandard building under the TIF law to be able to capture tax increment. In this case, the plan is to demolish that building before there's any new development. So, we qualify it, in a sense, pre-qualify it as an eligible property, the building before it's torn down, and then in the event someone comes back to us and says, "We'd like to use tax increment financing to build our project on this property, the building's already gone, but we've pre-qualified it."
So, we're not in essence making it a TIF?
No, no, we're only qualifying the district or the building.
In case we want to.
In case we want to.
It's not that big of a site either, is it? I mean...
Over three acres.
But, I mean, that's depending on what you're looking for, I suppose.
And TIF is always better than tax abatement, in my opinion, but...
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve the, approving the proposal for TIF services. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Justin Crick claims, I pulled that one down, just have one question.
For the thirty-first?
This is for the thirty-first, December thirty-first. It's on page, first page. What, we're paying six sixty-five, sixty-six hundred for the siren repair, is that just general yearly maintenance or...
So, the siren repair is, if council recalls, we switch from a service contract to an annual inspection. So, the very first annual inspection found that one of our sirens, all the batteries had to be replaced, one of our sirens, the radio was bad, another siren, the antenna was bad, some ceilings were bad as far as penetrations through the cabinets. Anyway, there was a laundry list of things that had to be fixed. So, what you're seeing there is the cost of the repairs, I don't know if that includes the radio, the radio was about... Yeah, so the radio was a separate bill, I don't know if they combined it. Okay, so, Joe's pointing out they did not. So, those sirens then were split down per location. So, we have full responsibility for the siren located by First Farmers and Merchants or the old White Rock location. And the other three are joint powers. So, the other three, we will split those costs, one-third, to us, one-third... So the other three, we will split those costs, one-third to us, one-third to Dakota and one-third to Goodhue. We are the fiscal agent for that agreement. So we incur all costs, then we in turn bill out.
Okay.
So what you don't see there is the costs that are getting billed out to Goodhue and Dakota. That will come back in. It will essentially be a pass-through that offsets. But that offset is then done, uh, by finance.
So we're a third, a third, a third.
We'll see it on the revenue.
You'd see it on the revenue side. I don't know if they will retro it back into the nineteen. I guess it just depends on how fast we get those payments.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would just be credited onto the twenty-twenty on the revenue side as reimbursement. You saw the same thing previously with the, um, maintenance contract. We would get invoiced quarterly, I think it was. We would pay it, then we would bill Dakota, who would then in turn bill Goodhue. Um, what we've moved to do is just simplify everything. The ratios were different. It was, we paid twenty-five percent. Uh, but then Dakota paid fifty percent of the, of their balance, and then Goodhue paid fifty percent of, you know. It was just complicated. And so we moved to this new format. We still split the capital costs. So if we were to add another siren, the capital costs go back to the old formula. But the ongoing maintenance is just split a third, a third, a third.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to approve that. I guess I can't make that, so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to my bill and a second by Morris to approve the Justin Crick claims for ending December thirty-first. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We'll get into reports. Uh, Kyle, you got something for the chamber?
Good evening, council and community. Just to let you know, um, January first was our, um, new year for chamber membership. And so right now we have fifty-five members paid in full, um, and that includes one brand-new member. And so, um, also to let you know, the flowers for the flower baskets have been ordered. And so they will be here before Mother's Day. And so if you're interested in doing a sponsorship for flower baskets, uh, please give us a call at the, the chamber or stop in. Not a problem there. We are also working on our Discover Guide for twenty-twenty. Um, one thing that we will be doing is we're going to add a section that can be used like a resource guide. So when people move into our community, they have a place where they can find what the utilities are, what the health services are, what the whatever, whatever. And so it's all in one place. Rather than having a tourist, a resource referral, we're going to try to get it all into one Discover Guide. Okay? That is the news from the chamber. We've got many things going on. Um, we will be taking credit cards within the next week. And so that'll be something very new for the chamber and, uh,
Go in and buy something and see if anyone knows how to use it.
Buy a mug.
One postcard.
Buy a mug.
I got all my mugs.
We might have to have an extra fee on a postcard.
You can't. No. Visa MasterCard regulations say you should be able to buy a stick of gum. That's the sad thing. I know.
All right. Any other questions for the chamber?
Do you know how long it takes to cross the street?
Depends on how quickly you want to go.
Those seconds flash.
Oh.
Because you have left?
Yep. Probably about five, four or five, depending on how slippery it is.
Sometimes, sometimes they cross on red, and I'm just wondering if she couldn't count or.
At least he's not catching me on the crosswalks, so. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaking of those signs, we've met with Minda today. I knew there were going to be new stoplights down there next year, and they're taking out those walk things.
Oh, they are?
Really?
Oh.
Oh, man.
Probably putting in something different, but it's all going to change next year.
Well, the walk thing was a good thing.
The curbs are going to change at the intersection down there.
Put in a roundabout, turn lanes?
That was suggested. You know, the, you know, the problem coming down the hill from the bank to the stoplights on Main Street, you know, we've had a problem with the right lane there, you know, we've got the white stripe. They're making the curb, at least it's one of the options, making the curb come out a little further so you can't get in the right lane.
So would they essentially be bringing the curb out to mark the, the lane edge? So parking and stuff would be a more of a dedicated spot? Interesting.
Just a heads up, the, uh, they're going to have some information meetings at the elementary school, I think, starting February fourth. They're going to have business owners the first night and residential.
February fifth.
February fifth.
Yep.
And then another meeting for the residents, and then they're just going to have one big open house to explain all this because it's going to happen in twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Interestingly, I hadn't, I hadn't heard that they were going to be planning anything.
Redo the street from the stoplights to the high school or.
Is it a, a total redo or just a, uh, resurface?
Sidewalks too.
Yeah, street resurface and sidewalks to meet ADA standards.
Oh, boy.
That's the challenge.
It's quite, it's quite a project. It's quite a project. But you'll hear more about that because the first meeting is February fifth. Okay, moving on. Uh, EDA, uh, Morris or Dave?
I was quickly mentioned to the, to the council and, and thank Superintendent Sampson. He did come to our meeting, our last meeting, and we talked about the strategic plan, um, and their national foundation grant, the technology grant, uh, and had a real good dialogue, I think, with, with the superintendent. Uh, I think he's going to continue to, to participate with the EDA and obviously the city council and, and others and, and really enhance the communication between the various bodies in this city, which we really encourage. The other thing is we, we, we dealt with our, our Cannonball and kind of an update on that and some bland and things. But I think the, the, the new item on the agenda was, was Superintendent Sampson coming to visit.
Good.
Good. Uh, library board?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, the council did have a work session last January fourteenth. Just, maybe you can add to this, but things we talked about, number one is a pool. Where are we going to go? We're going to get, we're going to get some bids together.
Yep.
Probably going to be a referendum on it this year. Uh, we'll see, we'll get the plans together and we'll bring it forward and see where we go.
Who's going to come up? Are we going to do the plans or are we going to hire someone or?
Well, the park board's working on it.
Park board's working on it.
Similar to what happened a few years ago, we'll have the proposals. I think it was pretty much the council's agreement that we'd like to have a more fiscally conservative plan than what, what happened. How many years ago now? But I, I think, I think we'd be looking to be more, uh, more comparable to Pine Island and Plainview and.
Yep.
Chuck Woodhome has done a lot of, uh, research of similar-sized communities and what they've done with their pools, uh, Goodhue. And if we could be in that ballpark instead of the four-point-something-million ballpark, I think it'd be a little bit more palatable and just an upgrade.
Right.
Uh, make things compliant, ADA and, uh, update.
And we're not.
Modern version.
And we're not sure if we want to be on the same side or not yet. That really hasn't.
We haven't discussed that. It's kind of.
We don't know. Depends on when we'd start construction, kind of, if we're getting, I don't know. Because that might.
Where else would we put it?
Well, you also have to take into account what they're going to do out at Lake Bozby Park. If they add a pool or is it just going to be a splash pool or a regular pool?
Yeah, we've got to look at all that.
Got to look at that because it's awful close.
I mean, the, the last proposal I saw looked more like a water park to me.
And it could be.
Just, and it could be, but it's, that was way beyond what was realistic, I think. I mean, it would have been great, but it just isn't something that's going to happen.
Only here, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I, I think we've decided there's no street project in two thousand twenty. We'll maybe look at phase four, maybe in twenty-one at least.
Phase five.
Five, yeah. There's a couple, two smaller projects that we should look at. Uh, we got to address Grove Street problem, the water down the hill. We talked about a city sales tax. I don't know if that's going to go, but we talked about it.
I think it went as far as it's going to go right now.
I, I think that's far enough.
Uh, far enough, okay.
I think so.
And I think one thing is that West Side side, that's going to come up, but any, anything other.
I missed it. Missed a lot of stuff.
Anything else from that session? Probably highlights, Dave.
Might, might want to mention the rates and charges. Uh, we did have some conversation.
About the utility rates and charges.
Oh, yeah.
Water and sewer. And you asked for two thousand twenty, the carryover rates from two thousand nineteen are being billed this year. So there's no percent increase for rates this year.
No percent increase on the water.
Probably at the end of first quarter, starting maybe the second quarter of this year, the council will be back at looking at the audit from two thousand nineteen and looking at the year-end financials and, and maybe some forecasts at that time, so.
So as of right now, there's no increase in your water and sewer rates for two thousand and twenty. Very good. Forgot that. That was a highlight of it.
Good news, and you had left it out.
I left it out. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, anything else? Okay, go around the horn. Jeff, anything tonight?
We have, I'm trying to think, I'm looking, December's big, so I got to look harder to, to see January. Um, we will have, uh, coffee cups and conversation, but it'll be after our next council meeting, so I, I won't go into all those details. Oh, just got it up bigger for me. You know, we had a, uh, a community notification that we worked with the sheriff's office on a predatory registered offender who may be coming to the area. Today was supposedly the, the day that we would know. Uh, we have not gotten a confirmation. Uh, we sent an update to the agents that'll be handling. My inclination is, is that he may have withdrawn his request, but we can't confirm that yet. We, we need to get some, some notification from the state. But we are working with the, um, sheriff's office, uh, in keeping informed, uh, should the, the predatory registered offender move into their jurisdiction because of its proximity to us. Um, you know, we're trying to, uh, to work it in tandem, uh, so that we can keep both their township and our community informed. And so if there's more, more updates, we will put something out through our, our Facebook and our Twitter accounts, especially if it's not going to, um, look, or if it does appear that he's not going to come here. Um, but the Cannonbills is planning to do a, uh, sort of an educational component relative to businesses that employ, younger or minor, um, employees. And, you know, how would that impact them, things they should be aware of and stuff. So they have a representative from Department of Corrections coming. And, uh, the police department will also have one or two people there, so. Chamber made reference to it in their, their update today.
Okay.
So that's probably the biggest thing right now.
Right. Dave? Steve?
Nothing.
Matt?
Nothing.
Bill?
Uh, yeah, uh, David, this is a question for you. Uh, last fall or last summer or fall, they were going to do a housing study. Have we gotten information back on that yet?
Yeah, this is through Goodhue County. We're a participant as, as one of the cities in Goodhue County. And Maxfield Research has begun their work, but nothing's been submitted to this at this point.
Because that was another thing we discussed last week was, do we need to have acquire land and stuff for housing-related stuff?
Yep.
Yeah, and that's, that's all I have then.
I'm told that we may have some preliminary findings probably in the next month or two.
Okay.
Okay, Derek?
For me.
Mary Jo?
Nothing.
Nope.
Morris? Okay, let's get into public input. Citizen may speak to issues not on the agenda. For speaking, please give your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Is there anybody would like to address with public input tonight?
Tim. Tim, Tim. Is that my full name?
Please.
Deemer, E., middle name? Tim E. Deemer, Cannon Falls. I just, um, wanted to quick, try to, I don't know if you'd, you'll have the answer to this. I, um, got this on the fifteenth, letter from the police department. I haven't opened it yet. Um, just wondering if the chief would know if this, if, if he can let, tell me if this is the final, if he's made up his, his answer.
Why haven't you opened the letter?
I can do it right now.
You got three minutes.
I'll wait to, I'd like to open it in front of either advocate or, or attorney, maybe, possibly. So I'll just, I'm down to two minutes, probably.
I, I think we should be respectful for, for Tim's, Tim's desire and how he wants to, to open and view it.
I was going to open it. I, I started to and then I decided.
Well, if you want someone here for you, then you'll need to wait, I guess.
I just, will this, will this be the final answer?
That said, that'll, yep, that will be, that's the final information that I can provide to it relative to the information that you gave me, yes.
Okay, um, there doesn't seem to be any, um, uh, what's the word? Any policies broken and, and any recourse? What's the word? I'm trying to think of. Any answers? I get, I'm really concerned about, a few things that are pretty serious, I would think. People, just two words, uh, false and untrue, which means, untrue means not true, which same as being fa- false information, allegations written in writing on a police report. Not just, not just one thing, but a couple of things. And then just the, um, the behavior, I guess, of, of one of the police officers that didn't have any, I mean, wearing a badge and, and all that. He's got a right to yell, scream as much as he wants, but in my face for how it happened, I don't see how, how that is, um, acceptable. I really don't. So if I could hopefully get, if this will bring me an, an honest, accountable answer, just still looking for resources that don't need to be, that doesn't seem to be out there to help someone like me and see, I'm putting, it looks like Mayor Haltos getting sleepy with his listening to me talk here. I'll, I'll just, yeah, hopefully find some counsel of, of sorts to to, um, resolve this or fight it or however you call it. But it's very concerning how, how that can happen to espe- especially the li- the lies, just flat-out lies. It's, there's no, no, you, you can check it affidavits from the people that he, that, that I was claimed to, what was written in the police report, two and a half pages of. And it's, it should be a concern, and it doesn't seem like it is.
Well, I don't think that we're in the business of getting between you and the police department. I don't think that's our function at all.
So council, um, just to provide you some guidance. So we're regulated by the Minnesota Peace Officers and Standards Training Board. We're mandated to have thirteen different policies. Well, I think they added a couple. Um, I'm just, I just received the checklist that I have to go through and certify that we have those policies in place. So these, this would be one of those mandated policies. So we've got a policy that addresses, um, citizen complaints. A process that's followed is followed consistently. Those of you that have been here for a while, you know that when we're asked to do, um, internal affairs investigations for. affairs investigations for outside of our department, for other branches of the city, we essentially follow the same protocols, because we systematically work our way through these processes every single time. We do it the same way. The only thing that varies is sometimes we may assign it to an outside entity if there's a, a reason to do so. As far as the specifics of allegations, that type of stuff, I'm also governed by Minnesota Chapter thirteen, which is data practices, what information is public, what information is private, and what information is confidential. And so I wouldn't be able to address in this forum the specifics of this matter because of that. But I can say that we follow our policy. Our policy has been reviewed and approved by post. The last time that that was done, I believe, was in 2018. I've got the, the certificate hanging in the office. You know, they do those audits about every three years. And every single one is different because of the circumstances, but the process that we use is designed to determine as much of the finding of fact as we can. We don't take them lightly. We take any allegation very seriously. If they result in discipline, then it results in discipline. If it doesn't result in discipline, then it doesn't. But there's an opportunity, should new additional information come forward that's significant enough to warrant reopening it, we will reopen them. So that's essentially the basic component of how those are handled.
So if I disagree with this, I could, I have a chance to appeal? Is that...
There's no, there's no necessarily appeal, but if there's other information that was not part of the information provided to us, then I have the opportunity to look at that and determine if we're going to open it for further review or not.
Okay, at first you verbally told me that you might, there's a possibility that you'd send it off to outside?
Yep.
And then it changed?
Nope, I said it, it would depend. One of the things that, that you were very concerned about was getting it reviewed and looked at, and so I made the decision, as you recall from the letter I sent, and I won't go into the specifics of this one, but you recall, I made the decision based on that, that we would do it internally because we could guarantee a faster turn in getting it looked at than if I were trying to find an outside agency.
Well, I don't, I'm not looking for it to be faster, the speed of what I'm...
We try to resolve these within sixty days of occurrence. This was reported significantly after sixty days.
Yeah. I tried to come forward to you on a number of occasions.
But again, I don't want to, I don't want to get into violating your Chapter thirteen or an officer's, so I really won't comment much more on, on the specifics, at least in this public forum.
All right. It's to be continued.
Public input, anybody else? Third and final call, public input. Okay, we'll close the public input portion of the meeting. Before we adjourn tonight, I have an announcement to make. It's with deep regret that I have accepted the resignation of Dave Maroney as our city administrator. There's no person in this building that works harder for the citizens of this town, and he's going to be a loss to this city. Not much more I can say. I wish Dave the best in the future, and the process for replacing him has already started.
I wish him grief as he moves along. Oh, sorry.
But he'll be with us for a little while, yes.
Yes, a little while. He's not done today. That's good.
The best in the future.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other comments? On that sour note, I'd take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.